Very good.
I'm excellent.
You're gonna be around, but.
But they're very folks. Be in four thirty, just before I fill the meeting order, I'd just like to mention that there is a boil order on the Elma for humidity. Or the residents will be notified by hand delivered notes today. That will color meeting order and let the motion to adopt the agenda as presented, no vote. And is there any secondary? Other, there any additions? Positions, nothing. All in favor? Conflect of interest declarations? Being done. So this evening we have with us Andrew Willett and Robert Fawcett from V I to talk to us about a a change in conversation conservation forest that we'd like to present to the the minister. And see if we can get this through, I think it's a good proposal. So gentlemen, the floor is yours and we look forward to hear what you have to say.
Mayor, thank you, Mayor. We really appreciate your time tonight, and I know this is the first conversation that we've had on this topic. So just to give everybody a little bit of background on this, we reached out to thirty seven communities, thirty seven of the seventy seven local governments last year, and we had somewhat presentation was somewhat like this around supporting our conservation plan. Then this year we zeroed in on a dozen of those communities, which yours was one, and we're working now with probably seven or eight of those dozen to try to get a jointly signed letter to Minister Heron. And Minister Heron, I think, is a very good listener, but he has expressed a concern to get municipal support on the conservation plan, because the old ways were always municipalities weren't really involved in those decisions at D N R. It was usually industry and the environmental groups that argued the thing along, and then the ministry would make a decision at some point in time. But this time Minister Heron, I think intelligently, has suggested that there's a social aspect here too that could be considered. So you got the economic on our side, you got the environmental, and you've got the social, which is your group. So if we can get your support on this plan, and we as well as other communities, about seven or eight of them, sign up a joint letter which floating around this week, then the ministry would really find that very helpful in his department. But with that, I'll give it to Andrew, he's got the presentation.
Right. Thank you for the invitation to come, Mayor Council. I hope I'm not saying.
No.
You're all right, it's fine with you. I think we're here to talk about forest policy, which maybe isn't something that you talk about here a lot. However, we were summoned here back in July by Mayor and Council to talk about the issue related to herbicide. And I think you should think about this discussion is very much related or directly related to that discussion about herbicide. I'm going to jump to the, I'm going to jump to the the conclusion of this presentation to say, we're proposing to the Minister of Natural Resources in a new conservation plan to add about fifty five hundred hectares or a hundred and thirty nine percent increase in the area conservation in your municipality. We would like to add that much conservation and really withdraw from our intensive forestry operations near people. Because the coming down here and talking to you about herbicide, this isn't the first community that we we do that, we do that everywhere we are, and we think it's good business if we just withdrew from being close to our neighbors and went and did our business back into deep woods. So I hope that this can help address public concerns about our forestry operations. Mayor Campbell talks an awful lot about drinking water, we just heard a little bit about Elma, protect drinking water supplies here, and I think there's other some opportunity here around helping to enhance or protect our tourism corridor from for the whole fundy experience. So let me just go back and talk just at a high level about what the shared landscapes initiative is. So the Minister of Natural Resources got a mandate from Premier Holt when he was elected to increase the conservation force in New Brunswick from ten percent fifteen percent. Now, if you remember Minister Holland, when he was Minister of Natural Resources, changed the conservation force from five percent to ten percent. So this is a further addition to what Minister Holland did when he was the minister. So on Crown Land, so if we're going to get the fifteen percent of the province and just rough math, Crown Land is fifty percent of New Brunswick, then we need to protect thirty percent of Crown Land to protect fifteen percent of New Brunswick. So we presented this plan to the minister. We were asked to present it on October third, and we did, and then we met with the minister and his staff subsequently about three weeks ago to take it through this plan in person. I, I, I know that forest policy isn't something that you talk about here a lot, so I'm going to keep this real high levels, high levels I can. Okay, but just the highlights of our plan, the plan we submitted exceeds the minister's requirement for fifteen percent conservation in Brunswick. We do that by counting all the areas in conservation that we already have, and by adding some new areas to protect water and existence. Next, we wanted to increase public support for the sector, and we know when we work around communities, we kind of erode that public support. That's why we were here in July to talk about that. So we're proposing adding new areas in high impacts for high impact social reasons like drinking water, tourism, and as I mentioned, just sort withdrawing from working really close to people, because that always causes some controversy. Now, if we're going to add these new areas for these high impact social reasons, we still need to run a competitive forest products business. We're asking the province to give us back to swell back some areas that are currently in conservation and return them back to working for us so that they can support the wood supply that feeds our mills. So I want to take you through a series of maps to show you what we propose to do, how it impacts your community, just so you can get it clear in your maybe help get this clear in your head. So here in Southeast New Brunswick, the greenlands are Crown Lands that we manage on behalf of the province, and the purple is what is in conservation. And this would represent twenty percent of our license or ten percent of the province. And very familiarly, Fundy National Park would be part of that conservation forest. Or back from the Louis LaPierre days in the nineties, the Caledonia Gorge is a protected natural area, that's part of conservation forest. And then some of the things that Minister Holland added when he was Minister of Natural Resources, Shefty Mountain, and then some more areas along the Fundy Trail Parkway, big little Salmon River. That is what's currently counted in the province, that would make up ten percent of the province, that's what we would call conservation forest today. Next, we're proposing, let's count what we already have in conservation. And Robert, if you could just toggle back and forth between those two maps. What we're doing here is we're adding things like deer yards and old forest, and then the squiggly lines are all the streams. So every stream in New Brunswick, if it's got half a meter, whether it's got water in it or not, needs a buffer, thirty meter buffer on both sides of the stream. And so that's regulatory protection, so the Clean Water Act, we think that should all be counted as conservation. Now, next, before Robert flips, that, that, so that's count what we already have. Now we want to add in some areas for these, let's call them these high impact social reasons. So pay attention down here, just go back for a second, Robert, in Saint Martins, where there's tourism potential. You'll see us add some along the Fundy Trail Parkway to protect tourism. But for your community, what I want you to pay attention to is this area around Alma and Riverside Albert. And although it's not necessarily your drinking water supply, it's Moncton River View and the app. Turtle Creek Reservoir is almost entirely in your municipality, we're going to put all of that in conservation. So if you just flip ahead, Robert, we'll just kind of toggle back and forth, and looking at your community, oh, go the other way. You can start to see, just keep flipping back and forth to make that. Take some, go the other way.
This way.
Yeah, there you go, just to see the impact in your area. So all of this area around Alman Riverside Albert, all of the Crown Land and the Turtle Creek Reservoir, this piece of land, I call that Chemical Road or Sommel Creek. Put all of that into conservation. So that adds to the conservation forest to protect those social values. Now, we need to get some land back so that we can still run productive forest operations. So I don't know, this one would be a bit hard to see in the yellow, but you can see, Robert, just toggle back and forth, there's some small areas that we've asked to have back to continue to support our forest products operations. So I'm going to, on the next page, show you what all the puts and takes look like, all the pluses and minuses, can you go to the graph? Okay, so currently Fundy Park, the Caledonia Gorge, the areas that Minister Holland added, twenty percent of our license, ten percent of Crown Land. If we count what we already have, that means adding all the stream buffers and deer yards will get up to thirty three percent. Now, remember, if Crown Land represents fifty percent of the province, that means we would already be at sixteen and a half percent of the problems protected, we've already met the minister's objectives. Now, the minister wants net new area, not just counting what we already have. So we, we propose to add these new areas around communities for tourism, drinking water, and really just being good neighbors and withdrawing. And the, the amount of forest that we're looking to return is thirty two thousand hectares. And really that's, let's call it deep out in the working forest, and there's not a lot in Southern Brunswick, because there's lots of people. There's a bigger impact in between, let's say Chipman and Dope Town in the, in the middle of the forest far away from people. So the net of that is somewhere between forty and sixty thousand hectares of net new conservation. So even though we're asking for some back, we're proposing a net increase in conservation on Crown Land itself. So if you would just go to the next slide, just to kind of summarize the ask a bit. In, in the last conservation plan, it's our opinion that it focused very extensively on ecological values, right? And, and they focused on all forests and all. And we would say there wasn't enough consideration for economics and not enough consideration for social issues, right? We don't want to be working down here next to your community, but when they designed the conservation forest to protect all forests, it kind of forced us, the remaining area to work was down here near communities. And so we, we want to, we want to broaden the communities too. So that's what we're talking about, let's add some balance to consider social issues. And, you know, from an economic perspective, having working forests down here near Fundy Albert is a long ways away from Dope Town and Chipman. We'd rather, if we were up closer to Dope Town anyway, from, from an economic perspective. So we think our plan better balances economics with social and ecological issues. But we need your voices in municipality to speak out if those social issues are important to you, because we fully expect the people that were championing the ecological side, I mean, they're going to want to continue to champion the ecological side, the old forest side. So if you think that social issues are important, it's the minister's job to balance those interests, unless he hears from you, he's never gonna, he's never gonna know that he needs to balance it. So that's really what's required, is your voice so that the minister knows these issues are important, and we, we would expect the minister to help balance those interests. And that's it. We've circulated the letter, Mayor Campbell's seen it, Sean's seen it, and I don't know if there's any questions, that was it for our formal discussion.
I forwarded the letter off this morning to the council, but they can have a look at it. I thought it'd probably be better where it'd be fresh in your mind after they heard your presentation. So they probably haven't read it yet, but they, I'm sure they will. And get back to me. I I think we should open up to council if they have any questions about the areas that that's going to be conserved and you talked about Turtle Creek, the New Orleans piece, some of the others, but council, it's up to you for questions.
Are we your first presentation?
We had talked, we presented to Riverview Council, and if you can imagine Riverview Council, they're like, why, why do we, their, their conversation really focused on protecting Turtle Creek.
Right.
For Riverview, D A and Monter, because that's your drinking water spot. Now, the land is in your municipality, but the water is
Is in there.
In there. So they were highly interested in that. We have spoke to Saint Martins and Saint Martins Council, because we were trying to talk about Mayor Bedford there has a big concern about, you know, clear cutting next to the highway, he's got two hundred thousand cruise ship passengers a year that come down, right? And then the impression that clear cut leaves when they came to visit the beauty of this community is quite negative. So he'd like to see more conservation force down there to protect tourism values. I would say similarly, we, we've added some along the Fundy Trail Parkway. And perhaps it would have similar benefits to you as you come out of the park to protect that, that big hillside there. We haven't presented to Dope Town and Grand Lake, and Grand Lake, but we've been in extensive conversations with Minister O'Donnell, or Mayor O'Donnell and Mayor Nicklin about that, because they're going to be the, the receivers of the benefit, right? We're going to get more working for us up near their communities, and they're a big fan of that, because the loggers live in their communities and the logs go to the hole.
As mayor left here in the app, we've been in expensive conversations again, as well as Mayor Craig in Eastern Charlotte.
Well, yeah. So trying to get as many
Municipalities.
Municipalities across Southern Brunswick can kind of match them with the ones in Central Brunswick.
Because we're very connected along the Fundy Trail to Saint Martins.
Yeah.
So I would think it would be important that these two communities are on the same page moving forward with your presentation.
Yeah.
If one's for and one's against, we're not going to get, you're not going to get any further along, correct?
That's true, I would expect, right? I would also expect, now this is for you to say, not me, but if we can, you know, help, if this plan helps enhance tourism value or protect tourism value, I would hope that that would be attractive to both communities. In addition to the drinking water concerns that we've heard from you and Mary a lot.
Yeah, I think protected areas is going to be a positive thing for people in our community, absolutely. I just, I, I'm not, this isn't my, my thing, but I find it interesting that you can have just a line in between two protected and non-protected areas, like there's a border there to stop anything going across the line, like.
Well, I think naturally you're going to have
I know.
A forest that has young and old and teenagers and this, but what would, what you would find where we're doing lots of forestry activity is less old trees.
Right.
So this conservation forest really just protects old trees, because elsewise, we wouldn't want to cut the old trees, because those are the big ones for consomms, right? So this, 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 you're, you're naturally going to have that in, in the forest, if there was an old fire or, but you're going to have young forest next to old forest, so it's, it's very similar.
Yeah.
Wouldn't say it's exact.
If I may.
Thank you.
Okay, sure.
That's okay.
If I may, down on your funny coast between Saint Martins and Alma, you've had a lot more conservation, right?
Yes.
And there's a little bit of yellow there that you want to harvest, obviously. The ones that you were putting back into the conservation, have they already been cut?
Some of them have, yes. Well, in this part of the world, everything's been processed, multiples of times, probably.
The only old forest would be up north, correct?
There's, I mean, some of these, I mean, there's old trees in Fundy Park.
Yes, but you
Not there eighty or a hundred years old, they're not bad.
That's not, that's not a little.
There's old trees here, you know, along that hillside.
Yep.
Riverside Albert, and then to answer your question correctly, some of these have been harvested, and some of the ones that we looked at, we, we went in a helicopter one day and looked at them, they're hardwood stands. And down here, the good hardwood stands on the top of the hills, like in the Kent Hills, we do selection cutting in those.
So it's not clear cut.
So it's not clear cut, and some of the ones that we want back have already been select cut. So they've already been operated.
Yeah.
Our plan would be to operate them again in twenty five or thirty years when we go back and select cut them again. So we're asking for, I'm not actually sure why they were put into conservation forest, because they were very clearly logged, you can see the trails in.
But that's a key word in your conversation, so I that when you select cut, you take in the good stuff, and you leave the young and some of the mature to grow. That way you don't have erosion and you don't have issues with water, right?
Right.
The dam is, the hill's real cut out by the waters a few years ago. They did a big mow of the trees, and the water seen a big difference in the aquifer, once the trees came back, because the trees hold the dampness in the ground. Your aquifer stays higher, right? But it's a big issue for water sheds, and then you find the watershed also, because that sustains that water for quite a long time.
Yeah, so some of the areas we want back are be select cut. Some of the areas, though, in the screen, they're working for us today, those could be select cut, or they could be clear cut, it could be planted.
But what I see on the graph, they're not large parcels of property. As what we're gaining back on conservation.
You're definitely on this license, we would be gaining somewhere between forty and sixty thousand acres of net new
Yeah.
Conservation, and the biggest gains in conservation are in Southern Brunswick, because that's where the people are, that's where the tourism is. People are drinking water, so that there's a bigger increase in Southern Brunswick, but it would be in Central.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
I learned.
No, I'm good, thank you.
Yes, has D N R studied this for?
We've presented it to the minister, and then we presented it like in written form, and then we presented to the minister and his staff. Yes, and they are, we we need to make a new management plan for our license starting in about April. So we would like the minister we would like the minister to agree or disagree to make a decision on this plan sometime in January, so we can go forward with our next twenty five year plan. Yeah. So they've got it, it's under consideration. He is waiting to hear from communities that here on, because he knows that we're talking to you about, you know, do you support this idea of adding extra air for these social issues?
Jim Coates?
You know, what has the time for, for your report to reinforce? I'm on work along the Fundy Trail. They work, go what? Meter, I don't know, it's at least a hundred feet or more wide, and it's a fall barrier. Now, I noticed on the weekend, it blew there and your trees starting to grow in that, it's what time, what time does that take, because it's awful for tourism, the local bear of the plan.
I would say a clear cut looks ugly.
Yeah.
Quite ugly, for probably about five years. And then at around age five, my opinion anyway, the trees are going to be about this tall.
Yep.
And you don't see that gray awful slash and stumps anymore, that ugliness, my opinion, it starts to fade at about age five. At about age ten, the trees are taller than me, you don't see it anymore. So it, it does, it, it looks awful for that short window, my opinion.
Coming along.
But then it comes along after that, let's say from age five to age forty, when we're going to be in there again, it's going to look more like
Yes. I live within close to the Caledonia Mountain, and I know it's dark, new colors, they got, but I'll tell you the awful mess across. I don't know, they just flash, now they did full horizon here a while ago, but still, it's, it's a real mess, you know, to
This could be a variety of landowners, a variety of operators.
But it could be, it could be us too, though.
Could be.
And I think it's hard to argue with you that when it's clear cut, and for a few years after,
Yep.
it looks ugly.
Yeah, yeah.
I couldn't, I can't argue with that point, I'll have to agree. This, I find it's temporary, like, don't wait, in, in about five years, maybe it's five to ten. It's, it's, it'll look like a forest again, but no question when it's first done, that's unarguable as far as I'm concerned, it looks, it looks ugly, it's a mess.
Like, from, how do you call the yard, or I know, it's great. You're looking there and the trees were almost all on low and nice growing, so it now that was all cut, I'm going to say fifteen, twenty years ago now, maybe.
What was that cut?
I think that was planted in the early eighties, so eighty five or sixty.
Oh, yeah. But it's, it's a real looks like a very I guess, they're all from the cut off on the limbs. You know, it's, 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 it's good forest to look at.
Yeah.
Not a, not a, not a over land, yeah. I guess, but all I've got I mean, I did all through seventy I think it was thirty, ninety eight kilometers just in the area where we used to be hunting, you know, sand, did some of the trees are real growing, you know, they're way up in the last twenty years. So you're doing the right crime.
Thanks.
Yep, just on a personal note, I clear cut a lot of my own here ten, twelve years ago. And after herb was on, took all South Woods' brochures, and it was Regis Brooch's heavy stuff, nice forest, seventy five, eighty years old. And today, to go in there, the animals that are on that piece of property would blow your mind.
Sure.
We got rabbits, we got foxes, we get everything, and they weren't there before. It's a difference.
All the food, no.
Because everything's lower and they can eat it, right?
Yeah.
So from a negative, when I cut it, it didn't look very aesthetic, till now, it's completely different, you know, so just wanted to make that.
Yeah, thanks.
Andrew, when you started, you said the most way that would be conservative are near the Turtle Creek.
There's about, or, I don't know, I don't know how much of Turtle Creek is in here, but it's
I guess my, my question is.
Yeah, Turtle Creek and then this area really along, along here too.
Yeah, I'll never
And then that block and Chemical Road or Sommel Creek.
New Ireland, there's nothing new there, or Caledonia Mountain.
Not really, Robert, just go to the that one there.
I guess there is a big block there in Caledonia.
There is, I mean, this is the Caledonia Gorge, and then what stream or river complex that might be, but there does seem to be quite an area of protection around that.
Right.
But that would continue, the rest of the green there would continue to be working for us. So we would continue to do our activities there, I mean, we have to do those activities to generate the economic if, the economic objectives of forestry, but we're hoping though, it's not like there's no people there, but at least we're not next to everyone's house, we're not in the community. I get it, where, where you go hunting and drive around on your side by side or whatever, but it's, at least it's not raiding people's backyards.
One thing I guess I would like to see, I mean, it's hard to blow up on the computer, but if we can have actual, you know, maybe not a PDF that we can actually zoom in a little bit, quality, I think it's, I think that's what we're missing right now, it's just a lot of quality map.
Okay.
Yeah.
I could get some higher resolution maps, it's not
So like when you zoom in, because when you zoom in here, it's all this.
Yeah, yeah, it's a PDF that really isn't able to zoom in, but I could get some higher resolution maps, and I'll, I'll I'll send Mayor Campbell, or Sean.
Either one of us, we're going to bring the
Is there any chance of having any large printed maps of this?
Oh, yeah, we can make a, we, yeah, we can make a larger map, yes.
If you could give me one of those, that would be great, that we can at least have on a desktop.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's the only issue, yeah, we can get a large one and then a few finer scales, sure.
I personally think that this is a plus for us to end up with more lands that are conserved. I'm not sure how the public would take it, but I think anything that we can conserve for, we're around water, around tourism, and, well, Fundy Albert is highly is all tourism, that's what we're driven by here, so I think it's a positive, so we'll leave it up to council to discuss it, get back to me, and please read the letter, and if you all agree, and we'll try and see what your response is and whether we can promote this, so I think it's a good idea, so I think it's a good start.
Did those maps to help you make your decision, or is this something I can, I'll supply them as fast as I can the next day or so?
Oh, yeah, I don't think, any decisions now until December, right, so.
Yeah, we can do it December the third.
Yeah, the second.
So they log in to you before that.
Yeah.
Excellent, and we'll, we'll put it on the agenda and ask for a rate.
Yeah, thank you very much.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
If there's any questions between now and then, just let us know, and we'll happy to
We will.
And give you an answer, and we'll get you some maps, show them to some of you. Super.
No, we know that you're in business and you need to No, we know that you're in business and you need to, to keep your people employed and, uh, I appreciate the. Effort you put in and to bring this to us, so thank you very much.
Well, thank you for the invitation.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, you're welcome to stay for the rest, but I'm.
I do a second meeting with Mayor and Council in St. Mark's and everything, oh, fast, and I guess they merge. So we had, if we could meet at seven, I think if we get out of here at five.
You'll make it.
Anyway, that meeting got postponed, so we don't have. So we're gonna go the next time.
I was saying, you can come later.
Oh, yeah, we can, oh, we can major. Thank you very much.
No, thank you very much, guys, and, uh, sure.
Thanks, folks. Okay.
Yeah. Um, the next two presenters are not here, I'm not sure where they are, unless they, they're not there.
Hold it there. I'm your viewer. I don't see it.
Now, so if they show up shortly, then maybe we can squeeze them in. Um, and Jim Lindsay did send his regrets, he is not presenting this season, so. That's, uh, Miss Odell or Miss Clark fills up a little bit later. And squeeze them in, but.
Uh, development activity report from ECO three sixty.
So I shared the development activity report from Plan Three Sixty for October twenty twenty-five for informational item, informational item only.
Um. Council direction request Hillborough Public Library appointment of board members.
Yes, so I did share a council report form with council in your council package, uh, so the Fundy Albert Library Board has identified new members. To ensure continued governance, community engagement and program support. The following individuals have expressed interest in serving on the library board, Kimberly McKinley, Jess Chukla. Not sure if I'm saying that right, and Eric Amuse Wilbur, uh, these appointments will strengthen the board's representation and help advance community-based initiatives. If there's any questions.
How many on the board now?
I have no idea.
Good question.
Does Counselor Coates know? I'm not sure, this just came to me. How many people are on the board?
Eleven.
They'd like to have the eight, but, uh, they were down to, the last meeting I was at or. We had a quorum, but we got some just a quorum, I think doing five of those there.
Thank you.
So is this something that we can move to in the consent agenda or? It could be, yeah.
Oh, there you.
I forget how to do that, I just.
You make a motion to.
Okay, I'll make a motion to move the appointment of the new. Uh, members to the library board to the consent agenda for the December twenty twenty-five meeting.
I'll second, I second.
December the second, yeah. All day. Uh, Hillborough Public Library in New York.
Hey, and this was shared with me as well, and I shared it in the council package. So the library board, for the support of Counselor Coates, has requested that council endorse the renaming of the Hillsborough Public Library to Fundy Albert Public Library. Uh, the board expressed that the name change would better represent the broader Fundy Albert community served by the library. Support council's ongoing efforts to promote unity and shared identity across all wards. And foster a sense of inclusiveness and pride among residents from the former communities. Um, the board also noted that new signage would be required to reflect the change. However, they do understand that community-wide signage updates are anticipated in the near future and therefore this cost would be consistent with the municipality's broader rebranding efforts. Some questions on that? Well, I think they're very forward-thinking, I think it's a great idea to be. Make it more inclusive of Fundy Albert.
Anybody else? Other? Coach?
No, I think it's a good idea. That we talked about it for the last couple of years on it.
Yeah. That would be under present, do you?
I'll move that to the. Um. Request from the public Hillsborough Public Library to change the name to Fundy Albert Public Library. Be moved to the consent agenda for the December second twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Okay.
C A O policy update and best practices.
Okay, in your, um, council report package, you have a, uh, document explains, uh. A change to the C A O policy. That would, uh, the responsibility away from the council for promotions and terminations. Uh, to myself, or it should normally lie. Uh, the reason why I've, uh, recommended that, I think everyone knows how risk averse I am. Uh, to certain things and, um, with that being in council's purview. That would mean any promotions or, um, terminations that would happen. Would, uh, mean that your decisions would become part of a judicial review. Uh, which is a very expensive, lengthy process, um, and again, that's, uh, um, the, the norm for. That could be in the purview of the S C A O, so that's what I'm recommending is to bring that in line with, uh, the best practice.
Thank you.
Um, not that I disagree, I think this is probably, we go back to twenty twenty-three, I believe that was probably written in a different, a different approach at that point. Um, I believe there's reasons why it was written the way it is today. Um, I know that we do have a personal personnel committee, so I would think that maybe this request could go to the personnel and then a recommendation. Back would probably be my approach, um. But, uh, you know, I, you know, I'm not sure when you're six months, I think we should look at that and consider that as well, like, the probation period and. Not to say that there's anything to be worried about, but I mean, I think we need to respect that there is probably probation date and maybe, you know, after a year, we would revisit this, but. This is my current thoughts at this point.
I should add that, uh, this has been reviewed by a legal expert, and they also made this recommendation.
Okay.
I'm not disagreeing that it is the right way to go, and I agree with Counselor Warburg, so you know, when, when things were written, they were written for a reason. And, uh, you know, I'd be more to open to look at this and, and, uh, a little more detail, thank you.
Okay. Land. So you're not in favor of moving it to the consent agenda?
Uh, I will be at the next meeting, so it's not.
No. Thank you. Twenty twenty-six regular meeting.
With me again, so looking ahead, so since, uh, Fundy Albert's formation in twenty-three, regular members of council have been held in rotation across various community locations. Uh, so as planning begins for the twenty twenty-six council meeting, scheduled direction is sought from council on whether this rotational model. Continue or meeting should be centralized as a single designated location or a hybrid model of, uh, doing quarterly. And just recently, we're having some internet issues in some locations and our videos are, are. Not the greatest to begin with, and then we have internet interruptions. The meeting in Alma, I think there's five parts to that meeting, uh, the one for Riverside Albert that we just had last week, there's two parts. Um. It's a lot of lugging for staff, for me personally, that I'm physically fit to do that background. So anyway, just for, for discussion, if council has any questions, um. That's all I have for that.
Yeah, I would, uh, support, uh, the one location, I think that's been talked about, uh, many times. Um, you know, once we kind of clean this place up a little bit and do some renovations, I think this, this would be, uh. The, the spot, this is our municipal building, so we should treat it as council chambers as well. Um, so all decisions of council should be made in this one location. Um, so yeah, I would support, uh. I don't sure you do have it as a, a one, two or three, but I guess number two, I guess would be just the one location, I think is how I read that. Now, you do say like all regular council meetings, but I assume that's like committee of the whole as well as.
Yes, absolutely, it's just a regular meetings that we're traveling.
Right.
I'm not saying now if there's a public meeting or a public hearing, obviously, we would go to the community that it's impacted or if it's a one-off. But just for regular meetings, maybe the whole meetings, uh, they would be stationed here and then if there's a special meeting that pertains to maybe. Alma, we'd go to Alma or recently we go to wherever that is.
Oh, right, I would agree with that also, I think it just needs to be in the trough. Uh, the budget of the money is supposed to buy something better, uh. Internet connection, wherever we want to, there's people, like their comments, but I understand that. Uh, so we have one location, may I would agree with.
Yeah, I'm okay with it too, I think we're getting more and more feedback with regards to. The, um. The professionalism of our videos, I guess, on YouTube, um, they're pretty poor.
Yeah, they are.
Uh, so yeah, you know, I'm okay with one central location.
Coach?
I agree with it, the, with Council, Democrats, sixty-one, County Street. And for all the regular meetings and the C L, A L, town weeks. Uh. I would think that we should, and I see we have a, you know. Well, something about thirty, thirty thousand under the twenty thousand per. Uh. Get ready to yell.
Oh, yeah, the audio upgrades, yes, also known as.
Yeah, because I, I should look there on, uh, YouTube and that. You know. Uh. It's not good. So you don't hear someone talking and then the next person is loud and, you know.
Better.
Yeah.
Yeah, so personal, I'll put it that way.
So we need a motion move that to.
Yes.
Unless you have more comments, questions.
I'd make that motion, move that to the consent agenda.
Okay, go, go second, long finger.
I.
Uh, December sixteenth, can we do the whole meeting?
That's Mayor Campbell.
That's me. Um, I'd like to see that meeting canceled. Um. I have two other meetings on that day, right now, the schedule, they're actually very important that I should be at. Um, but I'd like to hear council's opinions.
I'm totally okay with it, I mean, if there's a need for a special meeting, we're gonna call it.
That's correct.
So.
I agree a hundred percent. Yeah.
The Lord Russell agrees.
I'm good with it.
And we'll move that to the consent agenda.
We'll make that motion.
Thank you, Heather.
We'll second it.
The rest, all day, we're.
Alright.
All right. Department's report, registered services.
Uh, that's me, not much has changed from my last report, we did have a kickoff meeting with the Fire Smart folks, um. Should be hearing something soon from them, again, uh, I did apply for students through Kansas Summer Jobs. I have two public works labors, one G I S mapping technician, two B I C attendants and four lifeguards. The seed program hasn't opened yet, so when that does, I'll be applying for that as well. Um, the installation of the sign, the landowner currently has the easement in his possession, once I receive that back, work will start. Um. Bylaws, I'm still reviewing, uh, working on bylaw, then the amendment to bylaw twenty twenty-two dash oh three. Uh, for the proceed, the procedural bylaw, it's in progress and, um. Yeah, that's, you know, we all I have.
Just a couple, yeah, just a couple of questions, so with regards to the sign, I mean, we are November the eighteenth.
Yeah.
Um, so realistically, there's a good chance that sign's not going to, uh.
I, I honestly.
I mean, I assume we are gonna have to dig and pour some concrete and all the above, so.
Yeah.
Um, you know, so it's most likely going to be a, a new council initiative at that point.
What'll be done.
Right, it'll be done.
My sense, yeah. Yeah, council should be, uh, there's nothing really else to talk about amongst council besides, when it's there, it's there.
Um, with regards to bylaw. Twenty twenty-two dash oh three, the proceedings, will we have any, you know, cause I mean, I do think I have some ideas that I'd like to see suggested changed in that. So will that be something that we'll have some input towards, I'm just wondering at what point, cause I don't wanna hold that back, so.
So once I do my red line stuff, I'll send it to all of council, uh, with council package and then. Welcome feedback and if I need.
I just don't wanna hold it up, so, but if there's any way that we can participate in that conversation, that would be great.
I'm assuming at this point, they're looking at the new year. Oh, absolutely, yeah, cause, yeah, next two weeks is our next meeting and then that's it till January, sorry. We're not, and we probably won't be holding a special meeting to, uh, discuss that, so I would say probably January.
Okay. Yeah, my, my, there's a H R policy and a order by law policy and a number of other policies that would be coming forward as well that we're working on right now. Let's see, probably won't be ready from here, right? Hey. Operations.
Evening all, uh, obviously you had the report in front of you there, uh, all the way last week, so there've been a couple of things happened since then. Uh, we had a weekly meeting this week. Uh, it's good to hear that the wells are recovering, the levels are coming up again, and within Riverside Albert, the water's coming over both the stillways now. Uh, which is really good news. Uh, however, especially with the wells, we encourage people to still maintain conservation more as best as possible. There, as the mayor mentioned, the site is meeting, there is a. Or advisory just been imposed for Alma today, that is due to a bit of the issues, uh, in the existing well. Uh, we're hoping that when the new wells come on, that we won't have those issues any longer. Uh, but I'll update you as I get the details on what's caused that area, how long, go on for. Um, the only real change is Christmas is coming up rapidly. Next week, we'll see the remembrance banners come down and Christmas lights start going up around Fundy Albert, uh, they should be all in place for December first. On the first, uh, all are working, ready to go, so whether or not any of the councils for the. Unity is want to have a lights for Trump, uh, reach out to the CEO, let us know and we can make sure. This is, uh, we're looking at similar to last year, but having a few newer lights in around East Park. Uh, with the trees along left and right, saving the planning park in Riverside Albert, trying to decorate the African trees that exist in. It's the lone tree plants, which were a bit lonely last year, uh, so we'll try and boost it up a bit, and then again in Alma. Uh, we're looking again, the project is to project light in onto the buildings as well, just to light the area a little bit more, uh. I am looking into solar lights, but in around the casino, cause I have seen it been comments on Facebook about how good it would look, and it certainly would. Uh, but we haven't got any plugins, uh, so look for solar lights, if there's not anything. Suitable for this year, maybe, uh, PowerPoint there, in that year, maybe seven, you can look and see, uh, to enhance that location. Um, other things that have gone on over the past week, uh, we're still doing some final patching in around the village, just repairing some size rows. Uh, and Riverside Albert should see some more patching going on, just to do the last final bits and pieces. Uh, the D T I have identified for us before the snowstorm starts, and in Alma today and, uh. This week, ongoing, there's some work happening on School Street to resolve the issues where we have large washouts every time it rains. And spreads gravel across the road, just clearing out some of the ditches, trying to reduce the amount that happens, and that's going on this week. And that's all the changes I have.
Hey, um. Work pass, so I do have a comment, please, when you take down the, the remaining state banners, either roll them or lay them flat all the way out. They've been folded and they, uh, they're starting to, uh, look bad. So.
They, they should, they're supposed to be laid flat, the boxes that we ordered are specifically for them laying flat.
The, the ones that are.
The word flan, these boxes.
There there's some in Riverside Albert, and I noticed a couple up here. Looks like they've been folded over now. Maybe it's the wind that pushed them out. I'm not sure, but please just. Counsel, anybody else's questions or?
No, I appreciate the, uh, the banners going up. I mean, we've. Had a lot of struggles over the past few years, but I think remembering those them has been one of the better things that we've done. And it's wonderful to see and everybody looks well through it in November.
Taylor's land hospital, you've got a couple patches there around manholes. For those being addressed, the patching.
They've been patched.
They've been done?
Yeah, they were done last week. It must have been last week, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, cuz they did say for a take longer than I expected, cuz we have that heavy rain to stop in. Uh, but they have been round now and.
Thank you.
Ian, you're also doing some tree trimming, I believe?
Yes, there've been some tree trimming done in around hills where I think the guy said they removed six loads. They're doing something out as well, uh, and we simply get down from the side of the look at that and the large tree in Riverside Albert as well. Uh, we're looking to try to get a. Cherry picker zoom we meant to try and take off at about twenty foot off, just so there's no.
Pretty rotten that tree.
Yeah.
And had we had an opportunity to speak to DTI about the speed sign in Riverside Albert. They were just maybe make a note to check with DTI to see if they're responsible or were responsible to get the signs up for the corner. Yeah. Cuz there's gonna be more problems there in the near future.
We're running out of hydro poles.
Well, one good thing is all the hydro poles are new.
There there should be a yellow light, uh, sign with the yellow light on it.
Yeah, that corner is is rough, because if you're coming up Route one fourteen, going up Forestdale Road. It's. It's a bad corner.
Anything else? Uh, financial services.
All right, um, so I just want to bring, uh, a correction to your attention before I proceed. So for Alma Utility, the projected year-end surplus is actually twelve thousand four hundred thirty-five dollars. And strike through on the recommended year-end financial recommendation. It was an error in how I had entered their deficit. From the previous. So to highlight through, um, general operating had currently has a net income of over eighty-six thousand. Projected year-end income of five hundred forty thousand six hundred seventy-nine. Uh, available bank balance is eight hundred and sixteen thousand eight hundred and two dollars as of the end of October. For Alma Utility. The current. That income is one sixty-one, four eighty-three for projected. Um, net income is twelve thousand four hundred thirty-five dollars and the current available bank balance as of. October thirty-first is six hundred. Six hundred sixty-seven thousand three hundred twenty dollars. Not including the overdraft of fifty thousand. For Hillsborough Utility, that currently has a current net income of hundred twenty-eight thousand eight hundred seventy-one dollars. Projected year-end, uh, net income is a hundred and twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars. And has a current available bank balance at the end of October thirty-first of three hundred and thirty-six top thousand and three hundred and eighty-four. Riverside Albert has a net income of seventy thousand three hundred and eighteen, with a projected year-end. Net loss of ten thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars. The available bank balance at the end of October thirty-first was seventeen thousand seven hundred and seven dollars plus. The hundred seven, a hundred thousand dollar overdraft. For year-end finance recommendations, um, current forms I have. And. We should, our projections were for under general operating was twenty thousand to go towards office renovation drawings and property survey. This will prepare for our. Capital plans for the new year and, um, renovating our municipal. Chambers. Sixty thousand for a transfer to operating reserve. Sixty thousand transferred to shared reserve. Ten thousand for a mini split in the B I C in the municipal office second floor. Eleven thousand for Muni Soft Pub Works, that's a public works tracking program. Eighteen thousand for a push camera and two hundred thousand transferred to Village Four Capital Reserve. Alma Utility. We struck through for Hillsborough Utility, five hundred. Or fifty-five hundred tr- transfer to utility reserve. For capital wastewater and eighty thousand transferred to utility reserve for capital water. Examples of phase two water exploration. For receivables, we have, uh, made some strides, but, um, not where we really want them, but we have sent it overdue notices. In the form of disconnection warnings and disconnection notices, the first part of November, and I've noticed a few that came through today that paid their bill. So any questions regarding?
I'll go first, I guess. The Riverside Albert Utility, um, I think I'm just gonna have to make a meeting, um, with yourself, Jillian and. Sean to to look into this, because we seem to be flux fluctuating from meeting to meeting, so I really need to get a handle on. Where, because I think we were at a big loss one time, and then there was a capital transfer, and then that kind of brought us around. But now we're back to a net loss for the end of the year, so maybe it's just me needing to understand, but I think I need to understand.
Yeah, for sure, right. So, like, we've had to move everything, we've reclass everything capital, so that has to exist in the capital accounts. And we can prepare reports for that as well. Where, I think where it might be pushing it to the net loss is when our debentures come out at the end of December and then November.
Right, but those are projected debentures. We know those going into the beginning of the year that's gonna happen, so I really need to get a handle on it. And I I I don't know when I can set up a meeting, but again, it it goes into what we're trying to get approved for the next fiscal year. For the Riverside Albert Utility, because we're looking at a huge increase, but if we're already at. I say huge increase, forty dollars a quarter to me is a huge increase. In a small community, but this, it's the, it's the loss thing. I'm not quite understanding, but I will try to set up. It may be a team's meeting that maybe would be easier if we can set something up.
Even if we want to, uh, send some questions and, uh, we can put to, put together some detailed reports that help you. Understand, and then we can maybe pinpoint. Where you need further clarification.
Yep, no, I appreciate that. The only other question I have is about our receivables in Riverside Albert. Is about the process, so I'm getting some conflicting feedback from community members on the process. So on the disconnection, is it based on the length of time they had their bill? Is it based on the anything they have owing? Or is it based on the number of days they haven't paid? I guess I'm looking to see if it's possible for you to share or administration to share what the process is. For receivables.
So usually once I see it go past. Two quarters outstanding. And I haven't seen no payment, usually we go with a disconnection warning. And if I don't hear anything back, then they get a disconnection notice.
So is this in the form of a policy that we follow?
We do not have a current policy for this.
Okay, so I think it's something we need to do to make it fair.
Yeah.
For across the board, and I I don't, I can't speak on behalf of Alma and Hillsborough, because maybe they don't have these issues. I do know we have these issues in Riverside, uh, but I'm getting conflicting things about statements that are being sent out. When there's really no need for a statement, because the bill's paid or. Whatever, so I'm I'm trying to make it. See if there's anything I can do to help to make it clear or simplify the process a little bit, that's all. So I think it's important for me to understand the process. When we get a call. Because the other thing. Is, and I think Councilor Jora mentioned this before, maybe Councilor Garden was. When disconnection, I don't necessarily need to know, but it'd be good to have a heads up that you've sent some. I don't need to know who they're sent. Because.
Okay, yeah. I mean, we we usually try to let you know when they're going to occur, but we can definitely, I can send notice when they've been sent.
Like I said, it, I I need just to know that in my Riverside Albert Utility, you've sent out ten disconnection notices or overdue account notices. Because I'm gonna get the call, and I've gotten the calls, so it's like, okay. Thanks, so those are just kind of some of the things I wanted to bring up here. Thank you.
Counselor, if I could.
Sure.
We're we're working on the water by law, a new one, and that would be reflected in a new by law. It'd be laid out there very clear on how those things go.
Yeah, I think that's important.
It 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 is very important.
For everybody, so that it doesn't appear to be preferential treatment that, you know. Councilor Ward Russell paid fifty and you paid sixty, she got a disconnection warning and you didn't, right?
And and all that would be delineated in a in a by law.
Right.
So that's kind of what we're working toward right now. Uh, there's a lot of upcoming to do, fortunately.
Oh, there's no question.
But it's me and we're talking.
In the year-end financial recommendations, you've got eighteen thousand on push camera?
Yep.
What's the ninety-five, what are the price on that? Weird, it's just.
There's, um, when I spoke with the, uh, Director of Operations, uh, we needed a longer cord. And we're just going to figure out if it's what size cord we need, but we wanted to build, uh, some extra, uh, padding in there just in case. There's also some add-ons that may be very, very important for us to add, like the, uh, the distance sensor, uh, which wasn't in the, uh, the ninety-five hundred dollar.
Thank you.
Um, just a few questions. So under the year-end finance recommendations, just because it's been a long week already. Where did these funds come from? So there's roughly about like four hundred thousand dollars there. Where did? Where did those funds initiate from? Is that the, um. Surplus from twenty-three and twenty-four?
Some of it is, um, so kind of made a few notes on that, so I knew you guys would have questions. So our our permit revenue was three times what our budgeted amount was, as well as our estimated surplus ended up being. Three times what our budget amount, so a few things like that, um, some things that didn't occur. We didn't hire our lead hand, um, when we currently budgeted, so that gave us some savings. Public Works. Overtime's down, so I mean, there were some there. And for short-term interest. That we have budgeted as well as interest on long-term debt for projects like the new three-ton truck and Gulf Road, those weren't used, so. Those kind of tribute, um, but as you can see in projections, I've separated that by shared a village board, give a good understanding of where the amounts are actually coming from.
So really, it's it's from twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-five then. Right, somewhere this never would have stemmed from. Savings or surplus in all three years.
So it'd be a surplus from twenty-three.
Yep.
And the extra revenue we earned this year.
And twenty-four is not included because it's next year.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, if I could get like a breakdown exactly of where that stemmed from, just. For, you know, just for traceable emails going forward, I think, uh, it'd be important to to see where those dollars actually were. You know, how much is actually from twenty twenty-three surplus and what is not being used in twenty twenty-five? I think I just need that break there.
Okay, so I think you're gonna have around two hundred, two hundred thousand. Is just for what? From the surplus alone.
Okay.
By this year?
Yeah, cuz we budgeted a hundred thousand and, uh, with my completed financials and. Review, they're projecting three hundred thirty thousand for our twenty twenty-three.
Of twenty, you you're not saying that there's a two hundred thousand dollar surplus for twenty-five at this point, right?
No, like the the year is not not done, but, um, I'm projecting of leaving an amount of that. There to push forward into.
Okay, I think it needs to be noted, and I don't have this in my notes, and I'm just gonna speak off the cuff here, but twenty twenty-three, we had a three hundred thousand dollar surplus. Twenty-four, I'm not hundred percent sure yet what that number is, and now I'm conducting it two hundred thousand for twenty twenty-five. That's over half a million dollars of taxpayers' money that. So we need to be very more cautious and smart when it comes to the budget, because we should not be sitting on a half a million dollar surplus over. Two years, not three, so.
But also if I'm understanding that as well, like most probably should be balanced, it should be zero, zero at the end of the year, right? What you bring in, what you what you take out, you should not have that.
But when we do present the budget, that is the way it is. What happens between January and December is the fluctuations. So when we're down a counselor or down a mayor, that all comes into the the overall picture, that all. What that's where your extra revenue.
But that's why I would like to know where it's generated from, so that you do know where where that is, because. Going forward, when we do the twenty twenty-six budget, maybe there isn't as much money needed on one line over another, so we need to be very. Smart and transparent when it comes to taxpayers' dollars, and in my mind, having and seeing a five hundred thousand dollar surplus between only two years at this point. Is is quite high. So if I could get just where those dollars initiated from, that would be great. Push camera, I think Councilor Lynn asked the same question, uh, appreciate that there's extra. Uh, parts that you want to purchase with that, um, I believe I did have a conversation with the CEO. I mean, I would. State again that I don't believe a push camera should be at ninety percent shared service. Uh, I think this is an opportunity for for council to, you know, start, uh, you know, looking at. Items and lowering that shared service rate, not saying that I wouldn't commit at nothing, but this is an opportunity to show seventy percent of your population. Uh, that, uh, you're not always putting everything at a ninety percent, uh, shared service, so, you know, realistically. You know, ten percent would be probably where that piece of equipment would be used as a shared service. So I would appreciate if if that was considered with, uh, with doing that. I mean, the other option is too, is you can loan it out to the other seventy percent of the residents, and you're not gonna do that, so. Keep that in mind. I know that I did suggest at the last meeting, and I know that we'll get into some more budget discussions, I'm not sure when that's gonna be, but. I think it's very important that we throw in some CPA time in there, so I'm not sure if that needs to be listed here or not, or when that comes in. Uh, but that would be something that I would encourage as well. And lastly, I know that we have received the actuals, and I went back and I. I did see that we were receiving those, but to actually maybe have those on the same. Document, so you know, as we are looking at the budget, to have a separate column right in front of you to show you the projection or the actuals. So you don't have to go back and forth in the documents, and just make sure the line items are lining up to each other, so I appreciate that. I believe that's all my questions on finance.
Can I just add one more comment? Um, sometimes to make probably your life easier as a treasurer and our life easier as counselors, that. If you think we're gonna ask a question about something, just give the detail. That will eliminate the question and the in the on-the-spot stuff, just a a suggestion.
Go ahead, sir.
Even my, uh. The water. Contracted now, financially, where we at? Everything up to speed, everybody getting paid, everything going back.
I've been working with Englobe on N R D C on another. Um, emergency claim is what they refer to at us, where we get the money ahead of time from R D C, then we pay. We pay our contractor, so we're working on that right now to get. To pay up. And ahead. On our, with our contractors.
But they're being kept up somewhat as they roll along.
We're, I think we're behind one progress claim right now, so we're just waiting on R D C to. Please, the emergency.
And also she the bank account, we've totally, so the Gulf Road project is going along also financially.
Yes, so we we did at the beginning, the first bill come out. We had transferred two hundred and seven thousand over. In the Hill's Pro Reserve. And from there, we've got one plane back already, so we went and paid another, so it's. Remained healthy, and we've also received our C C P F money for the year, so. I haven't transferred in that, I'm waiting to finish this project, dude.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Uh, Mayor and Council statements.
I do have some scribbles here that I want to try to. See if I can read through my notes here. Um, so the first one, so as I mentioned a few minutes ago, there is a sixteen-year-old boy from. Had a swimming accident and now is paralyzed. I have talked with his mom with regards to his recovery, and she'd like to thank the residents of Funny Albert for their continued support. Currently, they're looking to raise funds for a feeding apparatus which will allow, uh, him to have Christmas dinner with his family, so I wanted to, uh. Pass that on if there's any support, uh, that, uh, we can continue to do for them, and, uh, our thoughts are definitely with with that family during this time. Um, on a good note here, we've received thanks, uh, and I want to pass it on to the rest of council, uh, from the resident who requested the streetlight, uh. Support in Lower Coverdale, so, uh, she was happy to get that response, and she wanted me to pass.
She was happy to get that response and she wanted to pass on uh, her thanks to us for that. Um, with regards to the Greensboro Lagoon, um, I appreciate that that there's been a few meetings that we've had, but the residents deserve a little bit more. So I'd like to request that an email or a letter uh, be proposed uh, with some timeframe. And uh, some, some just chat, a lot of people are talking on their own, which is not what you want. You want this information to be presented from ELG, not residents. Um, you know, there's going to be some expenses expected from these taxpayers and uh, you know, if they need to plan for this in the coming twenty-twenty-six. I think documentation or or correspondence needs to be given in a reasonable amount of time. So it's not something that I would ask Funny Albert to do, but I would ask uh, Funny Albert to uh, communicate with ELG to uh. To have some sort of uh, dialogue uh, sent to the seventy residents that would be, that are going to be impacted uh, interrupted from uh. From whatever plans they might have in twenty-twenty-six. If I'm not mistaken, this has been uh, worked on for the last two years plus. And uh, you know, it's time that there is some actions that are, are put to paper, pen to paper. Um, so I guess just at the last budget meeting, I was asked uh, with regards to mosquito control. Uh, in the Coverdale uh, area, so a document has been supplied to the resident. Um, as we approach winter maintenance in Coverdale and parts of Ward Five, just want to relate that uh, this contract. Uh, again, for the second year, this is two out of three, uh, will be contracted to Core Property Services. So uh, DTI will no longer be doing, it, it, your last year was year one, so I just wanted to. You know, before we get into plowing season, it's good to know that who was actually looking after the road maintenance for winter and it is port property. Uh, I know at the last meeting, I did mention the non uh, provincial roads. I think there's survey requests from. Um, Mr. Rousseau with DTI, so I'm wondering if that could be put on the agenda again, where some sort of meeting can be put together so that uh. That we do actually respond to his request with what roads uh, should be on his radar for the next three to four years that are not. City core, I guess, or or village core. Um, and just last, just for uh, for reference, just a little update on audit twenty-twenty-three would be appreciated.
It's time to write now.
That would be great.
Okay, uh, we're looking at it. I had a phone call this morning, uh, with E-Six, and they advised that uh, they're um. Just finishing up on their capital assets, and that's the last component.
And did they provide a timeframe to finish up the capital assets?
They did not provide a timeframe, a, or E-Six.
This is very unfortunate.
It's uh, very frustrating, there is no doubt in my own. But um, I'm pushing them as hard as I possibly can, and so is E-Six.
Thank you.
Counselor Coach?
Well, I haven't got too much. Have we any plans for the? Parade for Christmas?
December sixth.
December, sorry, sixth.
We'll be putting that floating thing, things did last year.
Santa will come to town then?
And we actually have a float trailer.
Is there money to uh, buy the, the crates for the kids?
Or? Usually we purchase some candy canes and throw it out there to council to see who wants to lock the parade, so we'll send something out to you all.
The only other thing I have. I've been grinding my teeth on that for years, but. Government DTI. Now. Two weeks ago, I went home. And there was a wide, an open corner. Road coast. So I did look and, and it's a loop between Nixon Road and. Uh, one twelve. Anyway, so people had to come all the way back from in. Turtle Perk into. Uh, open corner and I know it's going fine, but, but now there was nothing beyond. When I looked today, that I looked, there was nothing on five-one-one of the coast, growth. And it just seems everything that you ask for transportation, you don't get an answer. I did, I'm by Award Five, the, around by the. The mill, Down East Mill, uh. The. Uh, guardrail was torn off, part, partway and, and uh. I sent it to uh. The engineer and he said, oh, I thought it was to uh. Burger, you'll get enough touch, touch three months ago. Uh, we're just, I, I don't know, we should. Uh, the only thing we do have a new deputy. Uh, engineer, deputy. For DTI. It's uh, she's a crapper, Jack. So it's very different. And uh. I've got a good.
Are you waiting there, council?
I'm gonna uh, summarize the letter. And uh. And see if we can't get some answers, because that one time, it's what? Two or three years ago, they said, now you had to send anything to transportation. To get an answer before we use the over and at least with the. Either an engineer or the, well, that was in charge of the yard, they say, yeah, we've gotta do this, we've gotta do that. And I've had, but. Well, at least a dozen cows on, thank my own. That, what are they gonna have, open it? How do you know? Kelly King is a long time. Survivor in the. Transportation, uh, she was a good girl at work when we were for her. And when uh, comment, uh, only correct, friends going out, she was in touch, uh. She was in. Do all the things, she'll answer you. So I'm gonna send the, uh, my, my letter to her and tell her that there are, there's a problem. Yeah, and when I come back, I'll see, I, I think there should be one way we have. That councils at least could get an answer to that. Now, if we get what a three, four, four or five, we're going and have that, but they don't do that. I've got it, this for me, right?
We can always try, but it's. We deal with the same, yeah, lag issues that you do, or, you know, we do, sometimes it's worse actually, dude.
I think it would be important too, that that letter is actually sent up from Funny Albert.
Yeah.
I think it would, you know.
Yes.
You know, there's more, like again, seventy percent of the residents are, are looked after by DTI.
Yeah.
So uh, yeah, so it's important that that letter is, is written from a perspective of, of Funny Albert.
And it's not part of the survey that you referred to?
Could be, I mean, they're.
Is it, the survey, do we get it?
Yeah, the Mayor Campbell did send it out a while ago.
Okay.
Yeah.
I totally missed it, sorry. I'll look for it.
You're up.
Um, not much for me. Remember and Stay Services, I had the privilege of being able to attend three this year. Uh, Riverside, Albert, Alma and the Alpha County Museum, the morning uh, service they had there. Um, I want to extend a appreciation to Peter Jobb. Who continues to support the Remember and Stay Services in the two former villages. Um, very, very well attended. Uh, Riverside had over a hundred and Alma. Did not have enough chairs, so um, I think you set up for seventy. Yeah, and I think we logged in close to another thirty chairs, well, uh, from the other building, so. Um, it, it really shows there is a need to hold Remember and Stay Services in each uh, in each village with Senate Tap Center. Um, another, thank you, go to the parents of the girl guides, they provided their luncheon again this year, which was very well. Received for both Riverside, Albert and Alma and for Public Works, as they. Um, had all the chairs set up. We did have one little faux pas is uh, in Alma, when you need extra chairs and you have to go into another building. On a holiday, somebody really needs to know how to get into the other building. So luckily, uh, thank you to Chris Kelly, um, that was present at the uh, service, he had a key. Um, so. The lovely firemen dressed in their uniforms were uh, went over and carried the chairs back, so it. It all came together, but uh, just when there's, you know, I think, I don't, I know there is a reason why not everybody has codes. But I think in some instances, it's important to. If somebody's attending, if something goes wrong, we need to have access to things, especially on holidays.
Yeah, me too.
Um. Yeah, and thank you to Public Works for setting everything up and uh, I already asked my question about water and sewer. Thank you.
Look for it, yeah.
Uh, reporter of Gulf Club Roads come along, uh, you can drive across it, it's, they're working with them. Uh, I think completion will be probably in a couple of weeks. And they're doing, actually it's a lot wider than what it was, in my opinion, so that's a good thing, more filler to hold back, so. That's color on good. Uh, ten to two Remember Day Services, one of the Hopeful Cape in the morning, which was very well attended. I'd say close to fifty people and uh, the one in Hill Street was, was full. Chairs were pretty well filled, there was some standing in the back, so it's nice to see. For me, I kinda have an older. View on life and I respect what was done before me. And it's nice to see that people know how to do that, remember stays, that's important, and I'm a big fan of the outdoor service, so.
And young and old, like young, like there was some young mix. It was a real, yes.
Which is good, it's nice to see this young one still. But that's all for me, uh, yeah, that's good.
Thank you. Uh, for myself, um, it's been a busy month again, and uh. Uh, there's been quite a few meetings, um. I also attended some Remember Day ceremonies on Friday in Riverside Albert, the Riverside Consolidated School of Children. Did one at Forest Down Nurse and Home, that was also well-attended. By, owned by the students, but, and the residential support, you know, by, by other folks. Um. I attended the Remembered Stays Ceremony in Riverside Albert also, and I was very pleased with the attendance as, as was Counselor Albert. Um, I skipped the, we did, there was a Remembered Stays Service at the Hillsborough Baptist Church. Uh, I thought it was really well done, um. So, um, they did a great job and lots of respect was shown and uh, it was really good. And the Hillsborough Legion Services, I attended the. One at eleven, the one at two, the commemoration of the new addition to the Senate Tap where they. Uh, and now re-uh, recognizing the um, people that, that, that lost their eyes into Afghanistan and served there. And then uh, the dinner after at six P M, and again, it was well attended, so. I did speak to the VP of the Hillsborough Legion. Uh, and again, like the red up, thank you very much to Peter Jobb and, and the guys that went out of their way to make sure that Riverside Albert. Uh, had the ceremonies they had in Alma. Uh, the VP did say that he would uh, like to have some conversations about the Legion being back involved. Uh, in a bigger way for those ceremonies.
Wonderful.
I think they recognize the number of people that were out and um. So we'll continue those chats through the year. And this is pretty much it for me, I guess. If somebody has questions. Well, thank you very much. We would now move into phone sessions and I would need a motion.
Is there anybody, I don't know. Any questions, public statements?
Oh, public statements, I do have one. Uh, to Sean, I can call him Sean, if I need to.
Please that.
I really do appreciate you encouraging, uh, is it ELG with the Greensboro Lagoon? Because our subdivision is gossiping. And we don't want gossip, we want transparency and right up front what we're up against with costs, right? And the other thing is, excellent, excellent, to have one location for your meetings, because your. System, the owl, is bad. It's bad, it's bad, it's bad. Five parts, two parts. And you don't put part of something, so when you get to part five, you're wondering, is there a part six? So, yeah, best idea you ever had, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much, appreciate it.
And I'll leave.
Thank you.
No, I'll sit in the parent's room, I got, see it, what is it, satellite?
Okay.
I think it's not like radio, I can get really fast for the clothes.
The left, of course, maybe, it may not, your mom, help. Now, we need a motion.
Yeah, uh, make motions.
Secondary, that's my, I'm the alibi.